At West Tennessee Bank, we're a real community bank. Every transaction benefits the families we serve. Providing jobs and opportunities for your friends and neighbors. Every deposit is an investment in the future of this area. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
All right, there's a call on present. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda, but can you policy five for the policy revision also include looking at policy 2.805? And will you probably put aside a copy?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All right, we have a motion saying approve the agenda. Any other comment? On favor say aye.
Aye.
And the next thing on there is going to be a consent agenda.
Make a motion now.
All right, we have a motion saying approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. And it is approved. The next thing I think we're going to do is a delegation of, excuse me, celebrations.
Yes, we've got several things to celebrate. Of course, this past week, we were watching our volleyball team head out to the state competition in Murfreesboro. And again, we're not pleased about the results, but we are pleased with the season. It was a wonderful season, a lot of high spirited, both in county and out of county folk. But we're really excited about those success stories on the volleyball team. But then, as I speak to Clay, the athletic director, we did want to recognize not only the volleyball team, but the girls soccer team for their great season, boys cross country who are just learning today, advancing to the state, and traveling to the state on Saturday, and then our boys golf team. So we're going to take just a few minutes to recognize each team. Boys golf team was number one in the district championship, so I don't know if that's the first time.
I'm not sure.
But we are very fortunate with the fall season, so rich in not just regular season play, but regional play, sectional play, and state play. So if we could, any of your golf team here, let's introduce and have you guys come up here so we can get them on camera for James to post on the paper. Chester County Independent will update that webpage where you can view that, but he would also like you to subscribe. Want you to go ahead and use your players. Talk a little bit about your season.
Three of my players here, Projector Byrum, Sam Phillips, and Austin Moore. We had a really successful season. We scored some matches, went through a great season. We lost one match, but all the matches have been second now. With the district tournament, one decided to, with the district tournament. Regional, we came up a little bit short. We came in second by about five circles. But we are planning on coming back next season, making that as well on the state. And we also look to thank the board, thank the girls for all this support.
Now, what's the ages of you guys on your team?
I'm junior, right here. Fantastic.
So we're returning everybody to one. Okay, let's go to the state.
Congratulations, Coach. Appreciate your service.
I got a question, Paulson. Who is the one law of steering ring for season?
Hardman.
Okay, what next?
No, it wasn't.
Jason Judd, could you be next, Coach Judd? Do you have any of your girls?
No players.
No players. Get up there and talk about your team. Good, bad, and indifferent.
All good. We finished 12-5. We were undefeated in the district all the way through to the district championship. Our five losses were to five of the top teams in West Tennessee, all within four goals. We made it to the region finals and played South Gibson, who ultimately advanced the state. We lost to them two to one. And then we played sectional at Covington. They had 13 seniors on the team, so we came up a little short, but all in all, it was a great season.
So like I asked Jeff, what's the depth of your team for next year?
I lose six, but the majority of my starters are coming back.
Excellent. Good job. Okay, Coach Humphries, come up here and...
I don't know why your girls don't put us first over me.
That's my girls. Some of her in Miss Henderson, so we're going to be heading over there right after. We had a great year. We ended up 23 and 10. It's been, our first year ever going to state tournament was 2011, and then we went back-to-back, 2011, 2012. So we've had a little bit of a time since we've been back. We weren't number one in the district, but we were runner-up, and that got us onto the regional tournament, and then couldn't overcome Southside, but still made it into substate at Ripley to be able to go to the state tournament. We were one point away from winning our first ever match at the state tournament. But I was proud of my girls. They competed, they worked hard. I've got seven seniors, so all of my starters, except for one, will be graduating. But I do have a really strong junior class. I have five juniors. Unfortunately for them, they were behind a strong group of seniors, but there's a lot of potential to repeat and go through again.
They know how to put on the game face when it comes to tournaments.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. You can introduce your assistant, who I notice is not here too, but I figured you'd have something.
She's in Henderson. My daughter ain't one of her.
Right. I figured you might pitch her where she's going to be a great assistant, probably the best assistant ever in the history of Chester County. Okay, finally Stephanie Hatch. Since you're the most current squad.
Talk. Talk to me.
We ran 11 regular meets this year. With every meet that we ran, Evan Allen is undefeated. He usually leads. The one bad thing about that, Evan doesn't have anybody to chase, and so we've got to find him a competitor somewhere. But usually he leads, he leads out by about a minute or so. So Evan comes through, and then we're sitting there kind of waiting on the number two one to come through, and it's been that way every meet this season. My number two is Gideon McManus, and Evan and Gideon have led this team this year, and I call them my mini-coaches because they have studied, they have worked, and they have pushed this team so much that they have came up from being last to next to last to in the top. And so I'm just so proud of them and the boys that have joined in with them. Evan has been my number one consistently this year. Gideon McManus has been my number two consistently this year. Tucker Allen is a little brother, and we know, you know, we always have to be a little sister, little brother. But he has been consistently my number three. Carter Welch has been consistently my number four. My five, six, and seven kind of swap out every once in a while, but those boys have really, I would say, just led this team to this victory. And when they got to, I'm long-ended, when they got to state the other day, we thought it was just the first two teams, and then it turned out to be the third, third for first three teams. And so when they heard that third was not fit, it wasn't they, they kind of got excited thinking they had that second place, and then they called out the second place score, and they were better than that, so they went just crazy. And I had to tell them to hush so that everybody could hear everybody else. So anyways, they called mine as first, and I'm just, I mean, I'm proud of them anyways, always have been, but I have to say, we just kind of, you know, that was awesome.
Very good. Guys, since Saturday, Saturday's your next meet.
Saturday, the 2nd, November the 2nd.
November the 2nd, so it's two. So when you go, follow your same routine, stay off your feet though. In preparation, stay off your feet.
Somebody averaged up the other day, and I think they said they ran about 1,000 or so miles this season.
Wow. Evan, what's your best time?
15, 17, 17.
For three miles?
3.1.
3.1, up and down, not just running the track, so. It is, well, the only one that can probably keep pace is that dune buggy and get Coach Catlin behind you. Setting about a 40 mile per hour clip. That'll get you running at 12 a minute. But letters are going to be coming, on behalf of the board, for all of the athletic teams. We've got one more board member who's unable to be here tonight, that we want to make sure we get his signature on here because he is one of our stronger supporters for all of our athletic programs, Glenn Nayler. But I do want to say, and I liked, one thing that was included in this is, for every team, you have a reputation of great competitiveness, but also great sportsmanship, which both of those going hand-in-hand makes it where it's good and fun to watch teams who win, but win with class. So again, for all you coaches, for the hard work, I'm watching daddies and mamas looking at me with proud faces because you've put the time and the resources and effort in to help make sure your children have memories that will last a lifetime. But we thank you for your willingness to serve, coaches, for your willingness to serve, and I appreciate the opportunity that we can celebrate things fall, and we're looking forward to it in the winter and in the spring. So let's keep that pace very high, but congratulations to all of you guys. Thank you.
I want to say congratulations, thanks to all of our students, coaches, parents, you take anybody, even Dr. Catlin, he has to support him. I know he is a supporter.
All right, one more recognition. Yeah, well, we don't want to stop the celebration while we're at it. The board members were made aware at the last board meeting about our accountability of results for our district, that one of our schools out of the six was recognized as a reward school. However, it wasn't made public. The embargo was lifted after our meeting. I think it was lifted on the 20th of September, but I just want to invite East Chester to be here to recognize, if you have not driven past the school in the last, what, since the 20th of September? And seeing the website, beautiful picture, wonderful picture. It's nice to have those pictures. By the way, banners are coming by Patrice Martin probably next week. I saw something in the commissioner's update. But Kim, Renee, you've got some staff with you. Why don't you stand up and introduce so everybody knows who's here with you? But again, East Chester was one, our one school this year was recognized as a reward school. We were one of 85 school districts in the complete state. There was about 300 schools total. Now, there's a whole lot more than 300 schools in the state. There's more, like 146 school districts. So we're very proud of their accomplishments. Go ahead, Kim, or Renee, or whoever's giving the responsibility to speak.
Well, I have two first grade teachers, Melissa Allen and Nancy Burns, and Jill is third grade, and of course, assistant principal today. I work very hard.
That is an understatement. As I, of course, I know Kim knows what I call you affectionately. The rest of you know what I call you? CL Team Six. I can't read something quick enough before Kim has already got her group doing a book study with me. So I mean, she's always on the front edge, on the leading edge of anything educationally that seems to be of advantage for our kids. And of course, we've had some good times and some bad times. We've had good press and bad press, but noticing the good press outlasts the bad, so we're proud of your work. Thank you, teachers. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, East Chester. Job well done, makes us all proud to be part of the school system. Thank y'all.
Now, if I can give them a pause. If anybody needs to leave to go to the more important thing, Miss Henderson Hatch, you may exit out the back.
Y'all have fun. Don't leave.
You may exit. I cannot believe y'all made the alternative.
We were so close.
All right, number two over here is the local education agencies compliance, and I don't think we actually have to take any...
It doesn't have to be any board action other than, here is the compliance form, and just to give you gentlemen, this is a yearly form that we have to submit to the state to say that we are adhering to all the state board of education policies and procedures. We have to sign off, Bob and I sign off, but we also have to make record of when that information's announced to the board. So we will submit that document tomorrow.
The next thing on the agenda is going to be some policy recommendations for revision, and I think the policy committee already put this together.
There's, yes, two of them. The first two that's in your agenda are the two policies that we had coming out of that committee. We looked at the first section of our policy manual, and of those policies, again, the first one is 1.200, and it was just simply to put a date on the month that we would elect new officers. We had always done it in September following elections in August, but we had left our policy on the books just reflecting an empty date for that specific month. So from that committee, from that committee meeting, we recommend, the motion was made to pass, to go ahead and recognize that as September. And noticing in other districts in the state from correspondence, Sarah shared with me that other districts are doing the same month for elections. And then the other policy that we make a recommendation at coming out of committee with a motion is the duties of the officer. We've always included the Tennessee Legislative Network Representative, that's now Shane Connor. We've always included in our election process, but it was not reflected in our board policy. So what we did is just, we're making a recommendation to add this descriptor in policy 1.201. This is the language that comes straight from their website, but just to define what that role is, which again, we have been keeping that active, we just didn't have it reflected in our policy. So those are the two that came out of committee that we are wanting the board to approve. Make a motion to approve.
Any other discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Now, that's just the two that have come in. The next one, policy 2.300, this is from a conversation I had and worked with Randall, and there's a copy in your packet that is titled Title I comparability summary report in assurances. It is one that Randall signed off, and it's again representative of the work that he does. But within that policy, or within this assurance page, this report, it does require to ensure that there is policies that, policies that reflect these Title I responsibilities. When I asked the TSBA which of our existing policies would be used to justify this requirement, they pointed me back to policy 2.300. However, our policy was still reflective of the issue date back in 98. And if you notice from the draft that I included in your packet as compared to what we have, everything is verbatim except for that last statement that reads, "The director of school should develop procedures to ensure compliance with this policy and state and federal requirements regarding comparability of services." So I make a recommendation to justify supporting the comparability summary report that Randall completed, that our policy 2.300 recommends, or includes that last statement, and that came from TSBA's draft.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion saying approve policy 2.300. Any other discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Then in your, in your agenda are three policies that we included. This is coming from a conversation I had with Jeff Couples, and your narrative is, he is requesting permission to update our procedures for emergency response in case of an active shooter or lockdown. Our current procedures that are in place are dated based on what we did, say, I don't even know how many years ago, at least a decade ago. So some of those reactions that were right on point with what was current at the time has now been outdated based on current events that have happened and the learning that has taken place from FBI, TBI, and other entities, agencies that have studied this. So what Jeff is requesting is not a policy change, it's not a policy addition. He just asks for permission to be able to go back and rework the procedures for this emergency response. I don't know if you guys remember, but what we have in the classrooms are flip charts in each classroom. And that flip chart is flip chart to recommend, or to give teachers or staff the guidance about what to do in the case of, say, a fire, or an inclement weather drill, or inclement weather, or tornado, or intruder. So there's all these steps in the process that they are required to follow. That's what he wants to update to the current trends and studies. Jeff's here, if anybody wants to ask him a question. But this would be also in partnership with the school resource officers, Kyle Connor, Kyle Walker also.
Jeff, I'm assuming then there is some changes in the way they now suggest that we handle crisis situations, and that's always kind of updated.
Currently, our policy, in our policy, our procedures at the high schools, just lockdown only, and like, just the whole presentation of the flip chart. If you look at it now, it's in paragraph form almost, it's a lot to read, and when you're under stress, obviously in an active shooter situation, you're not going to be able to read what your immediate action should be. So what we're looking for is something quicker, something that you can remember when you're under stress. But currently, given, you know, the kind of state of the fakers as far as school safety with all the school shootings, almost every entity out there are recommending now that the individual person's got to have an option-based protocol of what they do if a shooting were started. So for example, if a shooting started in this room, and there's a teacher in another room, they can make the call, if it's the safest thing to do, to evacuate the building and get out. They don't have to stay in the location, which currently we mandate that you do lockdown. So in the interest of allowing the teacher the freedom to make the best decision because they're the ones in the stress at the moment, you may have heard of Run High Fight, I don't know. So that came out of Texas several years ago. Now, most lodgers don't want any schools saying the word fight when it involves children. A word that we use some is counter, and it's also age appropriate in East Chester. We're not even considering that, obviously, because of the age of the students. But in our case, the closer you are to when the event happens, the more critical your decision. In the last professional government, we talked about the first 30 seconds matters, what you do in the first 30 seconds. So we're looking to update those procedures to align them with, as he mentioned, FBI, US Department of Education, pretty much every entity out there that has studied this. But there's enough data out there now to say, your best chance of surviving an active shooter is the same principle. If there's a shark in the water, get out of the water. So if you can safely do so, evacuate the building. And currently, our procedures don't allow for that. So that's what we're wanting to do, is to align it with the recommendations of that.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, just so we... And again, I would say this, this is not just for high school. This would be, and again, I wouldn't just say that we're going to just, whatever the high school says, it's going to have, it's going to be vetted with other administration of the schools. So we want everybody to be on board because we have to be conscientious that other schools, we're advising other schools to follow this same work, because I know you guys have studied this quite a bit, more than we have.
Make a motion, Jim, to proceed, update procedures.
When he updates the procedures, is he going to bring them back to us?
Yes. Now, I know this is putting you on a timeline, but what do you think as far as time now, that if we are in October, end of October, when do you think, we've got another board meeting next month?
Well, currently, we've been...
You've already been working on it.
We've been talking to the faculty about an ALICE program, which is an acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, depending on where you are when that crisis starts. If you're in the hallway, you don't really have the opportunity to lie, you know, so it just kind of depends on where you are. So there's programs out there that we've already studied, and Detective Connor is going to come with me tonight, but he's actually training the model police department in the school shootings and whatnot today, or tonight. So I would say relatively soon.
Okay.
Bring it back to you. It's just a matter of deciding what format, we won't put the new flip chart in.
Well, we've got a board meeting next month, the 29th, and then in December also, before the end of the month, or middle.
So we're planning a major drill in January again, so that's why we kind of want to give permission to rewrite and update so that we will be, so we can practice it during the drill.
And in this drill, I'll just go ahead and say it for the sake of, is it okay to break the news? You're not trying to keep that, you know, about where the drill is taking place. You're going to drill with kids in transition, is that right? Where there's more kids in the hallway, which not every time is some emergency going to happen where all the kids are in a classroom. So being more conscientious of actual life experiences, because you know, every hour or so, you've got transition time, and it could happen just as much during the transition time as it could happen with everybody in the classroom.
Do I have a second? Or do we have a motion saying we do give, Jeff, options to upgrade this or update the procedures? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, we will be... Jeff, we know you're going to do what's best for the kids.
Okay. You want to go to group one, keep the things in marriage with... Okay, all right. So 3.500. Okay, on the, the next one in your board packet is a recommendation for improved services. Stacy King. Again, this is not a change in our, in our meal cost for the students or the adults. There is actually no change to the policies for this year, except what we're, the recommendation is, is, once the students have any type of negative balance, we're talking about charges that a student creates when they don't have money, or families don't have money to pay for that lunch at that time, that when they have any negative balance, letters will be sent home to the parents requesting payment. Previous years, it had to reach a certain dollar amount threshold, which I think was, what, $10?
I don't know what it was before. We just basically were not following the policy that was out there before. I mean, nobody, and I believe the cafeteria managers are already sending those letters now. So this is just actually what we are actually doing.
Well, I can tell you, two principals right here out of the six are very conscientious of trying to make sure those meals are caught up because high school and East Chester are really the two leading candidates for, for some reason. Of course, I know a student size makes the difference, the number of kids, but there's several families last year and year before that were carrying sizable debt through the course of the whole year, even into the summer, and still some carrying debt, were not paying for their meals. So it's a, it's a recommendation to make this adjustment. This is a procedure again, and the policy itself does not change, but it's a change in how the procedure reads about any negative balance information gets shared to the families.
Even though they don't pay, you can't pay them back.
Well, there's ways that you can, I mean, they're having success. I mean, Kim through just, and Dr. Catlin too, well, both doctors, I'm sorry. Kim, you've done earned it too, I'm sorry. But it's just staying on them to pay. You can't deny them a meal. That's the issue that...
And the prior policy said they would get an alternate meal, which we were also not doing, so we eliminated that.
What was that?
I'm not sure why that was out there, but we don't do that. So there was no reason for it to stay in policy.
Now, again, these families also, because some of these families may qualify for free reduced lunch, so we want to make sure their applications are completed too.
Okay. So what, what more things?
It is just, we're going to, what we're doing for you guys is just to make sure that you are accepting the new procedure that drops what we had before about a threshold of a dollar amount, and then following is what Stacy just shared, the no substitute or alternative lunch being offered. What you see here is actually what would be provided if you approved it.
Make a motion to approve the revision.
Second. We have a motion saying approve revision. Any other recommendations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, it is approved.
The next policy was 6.411. This is a revision to the policy, and again, this is, I received this one from Stacy, but this would also, with Heather being here too...
Which I received from Heather.
Do what?
I received it from Heather.
Okay, so Heather... Okay, so Heather, you're to blame for this work that we happened to do. But if you notice on the wellness policy, what I had included was the sections that are highlighted, and I know that your highlight doesn't have the color to it, it's just a deeper shade of either gray or darker gray. But those sections, it's, it's consistent with what you have in your board packet, but it has that, our wellness policy too, it's the same reflection. But we're wanting to add, the request to me was to add the highlighted sections into our existing policies. If you have questions about that, Heather would be a great one to ask.
I'll give you an answer. A lot of this is just a USDA requirement as well. I mean, we're required to follow those.
The original policy that was there was one of those that was pulled down from your blanket TSBA policy. We've been using that for a very long time and just kind of adding a few little things in there. Well, we weren't doing it. We weren't, and, and actually nutrition was, I don't know if you call it written up, or whatever, because our...
It wasn't audited.
Because our, our policy wasn't up to date, you didn't have the things in there that it should have. So now it does. That's, that's the changes you're seeing.
I make the motion.
Include the updates. We have a motion saying we do include the updates in the other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The public knows that it is approved. One other thing that I was wanting to bring up on the policies that was...
Yes, Chief.
And it was on the purchasing. We had talked about, we opened the bids for the bus the other day, and it was noted in there that we, Thomas was lowest bid, we had placed an order, and I was asked about being placed, the order being placed before the board approved. In the purchasing...
2.805.
Okay, y'all have a copy of that.
That was one that probably would say purchasing 2.805.
But anyway, we have routine purchases and special purchases, and the thinking on this was the routine purchases, it would be things that had already budgeted for, which we did budget for bus each year, is that correct?
Yeah. Sometimes two.
Yes.
Sometimes two.
Okay. And, and then, I think there may have been something we brought before the board, and some of the special purchases down there, it would say, the special purchase of, spent your, his vehicle, building, major, some vehicles would be buses, but I'm thinking, I just finished board to get everybody's input of what y'all think we actually, if it's budgeting forward, y'all think we need to approve that?
The only thing that I had in that, because one year we didn't go with the low bidding, because we had a lot of the drivers that said they wouldn't drive a Thomas bus. And this was, I guess, when John was...
It was, yeah.
And, and so we elected to go with Bluebird. And so, you know, that's...
Well, you know, and I thought it was just over the situation, whether it was, like, what was made known to me is that it has to have board approval before you make the purchase. Now, that is true based on our policy, if it's a special purchase, but since we budget that every year, just like Stacy said, as long as, even before she was supervisor, when I first took the job, that was the practice every year, that they budget at least one in like what was said, at least four to...
What was the final deal on the difference of the two?
It was, uh...
When we opened it, it was about 102 or 3, and Thomas was about 94,000, 693. And it was, if we would have waited on the Thomas, they'd added $1,500 within a month
or less because of the tariff on steel, or something was going to raise prices, so we got, but we got it.
Well, just like, you know, we have to bid each year for copy paper, just as an example. We budget that, and we bid out for that. We don't necessarily bring it before your attention, because we consider that a routine purchase. So, you know, I, I just needed clarification, because if it's not something that needs to, if it is something that needs to come before the board, we don't have a problem waiting to the next BO. Could you do the papers through the buy board? Well, made now, we haven't always been on buy board. Copy paper through buy board, I don't know.
It's, it was not the lowest price.
Okay.
No, not. Contract Paper Group has been the lowest price for several years now. Britt actually pulled the quotes from buy board, and we compared them to, I mean, we still bid it out, and Contract Paper Group was still at lower.
So I just used those two as examples.
I got a question. You talk about the Thomas and the Woodbird, what was the, I mean, if we have those bags...
They handled different.
Okay.
Well, now Britt can add some content to that, because he talked to the Thomas rep who was there, leaving his bids.
The Thomas rep, years ago, I think it's going back to what you're talking about, I didn't know it, but he said, "We bought Thomas buses, and they had," and he even admitted on his own, said, "Those were bad years of buses, and they were basically junk," is what he called them, and he said, "We had, we had tons of problems with them." And after that, I think Mr. Pippin, the way he described it, I don't know, Mr. Pippin just said, "Because of that, you know, when you get the lowest and best, that we're not going to go with Thomas and that." And then Thomas just decided to quit, put bids in altogether. Until I finally reached out to him, I had sent the last two bids to him by email, and tried to call him, and he never contacted me back. He finally did contact me back, and I assured him, you know, he'll get a fair shake. My bus, got shop guys that went up to their plant, toured the buses, and they liked it, it was the right, and everything was good, so he came back.
Did they do a drive thing with the buses?
Uh, they, I don't know if they drove them all the way up there. They went by the, while they were taking the bus by, they went by and just looked them over, just to see, because we'd seen them in Madison County, we'd seen them around, and they, and they looked pretty popular, so we just wanted to make sure that we had the right style of engine, which they changed over to, they used to not. And so they're often, when the engines are the same, it's easier for us to work on.
At least, you say, a $10,000 savings from one...
Yeah, pretty close to $10,000.
I knew it was lower because who did the opening, but I didn't work on the takeaways.
Pretty same there.
The purchase, I guess what I have here, is y'all two consider this, the buses are a routine purchase, if it's budgeted?
I'll say anything that's in the budget, is budgeted, and there's going to be to bring it before the board again. We priced it when we approved the budget.
And, you know, like we say, special purchase, your vehicle, if we do have something...
If you do it year to year anyway, that's routine.
Yeah, but if, but if we did have something out of the ordinary, we could always have it brought forward. Troy wants a Mercedes, drive in, they have...
Mate.
Did they extend the miles on these buses?
Uh, you can do 15 years is when it cuts off, you can extend it up to 2,018 or 200,000 miles, whichever comes first. 18 years or 200,000 miles, so, yeah, we got some buses that are going to go longer than 18, because we got miles left.
Okay, so what we consider, if it's budgeting forward, then it's just routines or no change for the policy?
No change. Well, again, starting with your updates, just teachers and staff are aware Stephanie Steer from Five Points has been going around to different campuses. I don't know where she was today. Where was she today, Stacy?
Jack's Creek, I have her name, I think the junior high in the morning.
Okay.
With the state of the bill?
Yes. Well, there was, I mean, our policy, I mean, excuse me, our plan is still cheaper than the state's, so there was no vote needed. So we just stayed with private plan. Right now, as the enrollment period started the 23rd, and like I said, it's Jack's Creek today, it's junior high. What you have is the benefits guide that was made available to all the staff. We notified them back, I think before fall break, on that Friday, of the new rates. And again, these rates are still cheaper, better than the state rates.
How much cheaper?
Uh, well, there is a comparison here.
How much?
Stacy, do I, let's see. I don't think that...
The benefits guide is not going to have what the state rates were.
But I have seen a comparison I can...
So I have one of that 2.5. I'm seeing, is that right?
I'm not sure about this.
It was more than that, it was more than 2.5.
See, I included, well, that's what I'm saying, these last rates here are state rates. Stacy, I, I gave them a copy of the 2019 local education monthly rate that was put out by the state, so...
Okay, I just knew it wasn't part of the guide.
It's not, right, it's not part of the guide, but this is the state rates, and ours would be, fall underneath that. Yeah, this here is not, this is the state rates. They went up 2.5% from the previous year.
I did talk to Cory a couple days, and I do want to make mention that, I think every plan, the board, the county pays more than we're actually required to, is that not correct?
You're required by law to pay 45% of everyone at the minimum, and as you can see there in that breakdown, I don't know what, I don't have a page number listed, 69%. Yeah, the...
Second, like, who pays over?
The one that most people used last year, which was Signa Local Plus Standard, the district pays 78%. For the local plus limited, the district pays 81%. You have to have one of those plans meeting ACA requirements, and this grouping is the local plus limits at $99 a month.
Now, does this lock them in for another two years?
No, this is year by year.
Because I know originally it was a two-year...
Yes, two-year commitment, but now we're year by year. So we, we evaluate this every year, and it is based on our claim tree. I mean, that's why we had initially wanted to get a claim report, or at least some numbers early, so we could budget properly. But they coached us, and, and we agreed to wait till further in the summer, because usually during the summer months, for some reason, there's less illness. I guess people are vacationing, kind of pushing through.
And they receive more of our premiums, the longer that we wait, they receive more of our premiums, which helps our renewal rate.
So they offer us better rates than what we would have if we'd asked earlier.
Has there been any problem with doctors paying, anything like that?
They're the same network.
I know it's supposed to be, but I just wanted to make sure that it is, so there hasn't been any problems.
Now, there's, there's been one or two individuals, I'm, I'm not going to name them here, but there's been one or two individuals that have had some issues where they didn't recognize their insurance provider, but that was made right. It happened repeatedly to the same one, and I know I spoke to Wes Dozier, and who is one of the Five Points staff, and he said, "I'll make it right," because what they were doing is delegating that work to somebody else, and it seemed to default back to the error. But it was corrected, so nothing has been outstanding that hadn't been corrected. But again, they provide their customer service, they provide their numbers, their contact information, we have our online five points apps, my benefits channel.
That walking program was extremely successful last year, and that was all because of them. Their prices, speedometers, the whole nine yards was done by them.
The roof is done. Other than moving that portable potty, everything else is off the ground, so I'm hoping I will call them tomorrow to make sure they don't forget their obligations. I laugh with Jeff, he used Matlock, that we don't need to keep that there, and he was agreeing, so... But now, the walk with Jeff the other day, Ricky the other day too, at the high school, any new status, Rick, from the last? They haven't started any flooring, have they?
They hooked into the sprinkler systems today, they had the sprinkler systems up then, because I had it unlocked a little in there, so that stuff's late, so maybe they've been doing a lot of inspections, so...
Windows are in now, the drop ceiling frame, tiles are there, ready to be installed. Furniture for the classrooms are...
Last thing I'm working on is the tag boards, or what you call a bulletin board, everything else.
Kids at the floor are supposed to start Monday.
And then I know that the appliances for the pace lab delivery is at the end of this month. So our aiming point is around Thanksgiving, to give teachers and staff an opportunity to move in and transition, so we can start the first of the new year.
Baseball softball, children's...
Well, as you can see, this is the last correspondence I've had with Jeff Vaughn. We decided to continue our work with him. We met with Jeff back a few, gosh, it's been probably six weeks, six weeks ago. I've got a letter in here.
Is that everybody's same rate?
I did. Well, everybody's the same rate? Right, right. The rates are going to be fairly consistent.
But he's not doing any, oh, do you?
No, no. Where we're putting these field, based on the coaches' opinions, and also where we kind of weigh in too, based on where we know the property lines are, there shouldn't be any Dozier work or any dirt work required. They should be able to get in there well with level services, so we can start building.
Softball might require a little extra field because of the parking lot.
So it's down.
So they'll either have to dig in or add, I think, like Jeff said, if he better add, it's faster.
Yeah, we don't want to dig. We have no bids or proposals yet, that's going to come with his work. We'll know if he has one.
You got any better drawings of what he...
Now, that was, now, that's not his drawing, that's Bo Bate's drawing.
Oh, oh.
No wonder.
I was looking at it, I don't know what it was.
He scanned that to me, and that was a Bo Bate's masterpiece right there. No wonder.
What is, that's just the field?
This is just the, the first picture is the baseball field complex. At first, they were wanting to put this closer to the highway, but realized the property lines between Dixie Youth and what the school owns, it was too close to get a field house facility like they wanted with the width. So what they're going to do is report on the, that'd be the southeast side of the baseball field, back there on that corner, going longways.
They have field?
Correct. And then again, the corners for the softball, again, based on this, somewhere along this, from the setback, in this area here at the corner of the parking lot.
On third base?
Uh, no, no, not that far back on the, it's going to be closer here in the corner of the parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, it's coming here.
It's dugout.
Yeah, it's going to, well, it's going to be on, it'd be on the north side of the dugout, so it won't go too far back, because it's, the water retention here is pretty high. It's marshy or swampy, you'd say it's going to go. But I'm just sharing with you gentlemen what, where we are with that work.
I'm glad that wasn't Jeff's drawing.
Yeah.
We're paying all that money for that.
Yeah.
Push it, keep your weapon up.
Our board has anything else?
That idea is too high.
Our next board meeting will be on November the 29th, and it's going to be at the Chester County High School Cafeteria.
It's going to be in the new section of the cafeteria, and then notice that at 5:45, we're going to have, if the school opened, we should at that time have furniture and appliances available for a tour before the board. We've got the right chairs, we have chairs here. So it's you chair, you got the board.
Make motion adjourn. Make motion adjourn. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.